So Todd, everything is the same that was approved six years ago.
Okay, and all of this is, of course, available online?
No, it's not.
If I may.
It's available in the Building Department, which, when it's open, is behind you over here. Sir? Todd? That's the Building Department, or that's where it is. I'm not saying that everything is online. I'm saying everything is in the Building Department for you to go in there and ask for a copy or ask to review it without making a copy.
Okay, well, thank you very much, I appreciate it. I just, as I say, trying to digest it from there to here. I can digest it better if I have a copy, but I can just see what's going on.
You can ask them for copies. You have to pay for the copies, but you can ask them for copies.
Or you can expect it from here.
Sorry, me just. Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the back row that has any comments or concerns about this application? Anyone in the back of the room? With no one coming forward, I ask for to close the public hearing. Do we have a second? Okay. Any discussion on the closing? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Rich? Okay. Jason, can you just bounce back up, please? I just have one question for you.
Sure.
On page two or three, I was looking at the landscaping. The little squigglies, they're small trees, right? Rhododendrons? Where the garbage dumpster is, you have some kind of cranberry bush? No. Winter gem. I don't know what that is. Is it, how tall is that? It's right around the garbage and dumpster. It's called the cultivator.
That's a boxwood species?
Yeah. So how?
Well, it's planted at about 18 inches in height and probably grow to about three foot in height.
All right, so it'll camouflage the dumpster? Okay, and then the rhododendrons along outward where the Mr. Binder's property is, it's the curve?
Yes.
On the, to the left of the dumpster I'm looking at?
This area here?
Yes. How tall are those trees going to become?
Well, a rhododendrum, I would say, easily get four foot in height, probably larger.
The only thing I was gonna request, is there any chance where the, I don't know what a golden rain tree is? I've never heard of that name before. I don't see any... I was just looking for like maybe one or two more pine trees from like in between the dumpster and where that one golden rain tree is. Well, you have the rhododendrons, where the rhododendrons are? Yes. Like, maybe one or two more pine trees, just because I know it's the neighbor's front house, maybe.
Sure, I don't think there'd be any objection of providing two more trees in that area.
If the applicant could address that, maybe one or two pine trees in there, just to soften the driveway back looking at it. Sandy?
Jason, you'll add that to the plan?
Yes.
So I don't have to put it in a condition?
Thank you, thank you. I closed the hearing, I'm sorry. Sandy, go ahead.
The verburnum, the cranberry bush verburnum? That's around, all the way around the building. When I looked at that online, that can grow between six and 10 feet.
It could if it's not pruned.
Who's responsible for the maintenance of?
Oh, the owner of the building will be responsible for the maintenance.
Okay. Because that just seems quite high of me.
Well, we would probably ask that where the side windows are, that it doesn't obscure the...
Yeah, it just, that's it, because if it went...
Yeah, I see what you're saying, because where the ground floor windows are?
Yeah.
Those might be a little tall, if anyone needed, you know, to get out from a window or something, maybe. It might, I don't know how close...
We can provide a note that says that the landscaping around the base of the building will be maintained to below the height of the lower level of the building, or lower level of the window.
Yeah, I think that'd be appropriate. You'll put that on the note of the...
Yes.
That'd be great, thank you. Sandy, anything else? Chris? Rich? Rick, Dennis?
Couple of things, yes.
Yes, I know we have to do a few things, right?
Well, for Seeker, you had previously declared your intent in July, and you typed the action as unlisted. Tonight, I think you should assume lead agency. You've been provided with a Part Two EAF that you should go over, and then you need to make a determination of significance.
With all that being said, I'll offer a motion that we declare ourselves lead agency.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Has everyone seen Part Two? I know Kelly submitted this, and she put an arrow next to number two. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? Usually she lets us know that it's, it says no or small impact. She's letting us know that there is a small impact because it's a building now, there was always vacant land.
It's vacant land, then it's still, I'm small.
Oh, I'm smart. Does any board member have a question with that, or are they okay with Part Two? Any questions, thoughts or concerns? With that being said, I'll make a motion to accept Part Two. Is that what we need to do, Rick?
Yes.
All right, I made that motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's significant, yeah. Do we have a motion to offer as a neg, negative declaration? I'm sorry, it's been a long day. Anyone want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Chris. I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, Maria?
Yes, sir.
The way the short form, Part Two, is put together, and as Kelly presented it to you, it has the Part Three on the second page with the box checked, anticipating that it would in fact, that it would not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts, which is a negative declaration.
Okay.
So if, you can simply just date and sign that, and then just have that in the file, and that would be your neg deck. You don't need any other formal neg deck.
I'll do this right now, and who do I give this to? You, so you can send it in with the resolution?
No, you don't have to send it in any place. It's, you just make sure that it's kept with the file. You don't have to file a neg deck with the environmental notice bulletin.
Okay. Signed, sealed and delivered. Okay, with all that being said, I know there's a resolution, or not? Yes, there it is. Board members, do you want me to read the resolution?
I thought you were holding the public hearing open for the ARB. Is that not the case?
Did we close the public hea, we closed the public hearing. Do I want to rescind that?
Yeah, I mean, it's up to the board. I mean, you could close it if you think that you have the information necessary. It's different from how you normally do things.
I'd like to keep it the same.
All right, so then...
Then you'd make a motion to rescind the closing of the public hearing, and adjourn it to the next meeting.
So Chris, you made the motion. Do you want to rescind your motion?
I'll rescind my motion.
Sandy, you want to second that?
I'll second rescinding the motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so, all right. So right now, the public hearing is being carried over until we get that form from you.
Yeah, so since we have the materials here tonight, does anybody care to look at them, or?
Put in the cart before the, yeah, the public hearing's still open?
Not really. It was on for this purpose as well as the other purposes.
Okay.
And so I think it's appropriate that you show it, Jason. I think that's a good idea.
Yes.
That way you'd get any early feedback if there was any problems. But if you would be so kind as to also bring them the next time, that would be helpful.
This is the, oh, this is the siding color?
This is the siding color, I believe, and this is the trim?
Okay. And that's the shingle material that is to be used there.
If you could hold it up, because it also saw the public sees it as well. Thanks. So which is the main color?
This would be the siding color, this would be the trim.
Okay, so it's heritage cream, and then it's cypress? And then it's, oh my God, burnt sienna?
That's the roof.
That's the roof, that's the roof shingle, okay. So if you can get that form in tomorrow, Friday?
Sure.
Dennis will make this number three on April 17th. And then we can, well, I need a motion to continue the public hearing till April 17th.
I'll make the motion to review the public hearing.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And at the 17th, we'll review the resolution, and we'll get everything all put together, okay?
Okay.
You're submitting the application form for ARB by Friday?
Yes.
I'm sure you'll have it there tomorrow morning, right?
This evening.
All right, so we'll see you in two weeks.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you, Rick, for catching that. We just kept on going on a roll there. All right. Next application. Woodbury Common still here? We have Woodbury Common slash Michael Kors rebuild public hearing for revised site plans, special permit and ARB for demolition and rebuild of Michael Kors building with expansion to existing service court. Said property is located off of Route 32 within the Woodbury Common Premium Outlet Shopping Center and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as section 225 Block 1 Lot 70.2. Let me get my file.
Maria, just before we start, the, it was referred to Orange County Planning Department, but I haven't seen anything come in, and it, 30 days has not passed yet.
Yeah, I was gonna mention that to you. I haven't heard anything either.
Okay.
John, you heard what we just, so we can have the hearing, we can close it, but we can't make a decision until two weeks, because we didn't get anything back from the county.
Okay. I, it can't be a condition of?
No, the courts have said that it's a jurisdictional matter. They don't have the power to vote until either 30 days has passed or they get a report back from the county. It's illegal. Any action they take would be null and void.
But this public hearing could satisfy the requirements of the code.
For the public hearing?
Yes.
Yeah, it's just a referral to the county that's the only thing that's holding it up. The public hearing can go forward, that's fine.
Okay.
Everything can go forward. In fact, we can finish Seeker tonight as well. So we can, we can do all that. And if we would have gotten today in the mail the report from the county, we could have done a resolution, but they're not allowed to vote on it.
So we can do everything up until, but I can't approve the resolution tonight?
Okay.
Which will be in two weeks. Okay. With that being said, I'm just gonna read the notice. It's hereby given that the Village of Woodbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing at 7:30 PM on Wednesday, April 3, 2019, in Woodbury Village Hall, 455 Route 32, Highland Mills, New York in the Matter. The application of Premium Outlets Outlet Partners LP for revised site plans, special permit and ARB for demolition and rebuild of the Michael Kors building with expansion into existing service court. Said property is located off of Route 32 with the Woodbury Common Premium Outlet Shopping Center and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as section 225 Block 1 Lot 70.2. With that being said, we received the ARB application on March 22nd, and this was posted in the newspaper on Friday, March 29th. Would you like to give a brief overview of what you are planning to do? And Dennis, I'm gonna switch some, I'm gonna put Woodbury Common first next time, on the 17th. I'll deal with that later with you. As he travels.
Good evening, Board, Consultants, Public. My name is John Villapiano, Vice President of Development with Simon Property Group, parent company of Premium Outlet Partners LP, owner-operator of Woodbury Common Premium Outlets. What we have proposed in this application is demolition of a portion of buildings in our Hudson Valley District. The suite is, or was occupied, it's currently under renovation by Michael Kors. They're looking to expand their footprint to roughly 12,000 square feet. In the course of their renovation, we found it prudent, working best with the tenant, and then also with the existing conditions, that it was in everyone's best interest to demolish the existing buildings and rebuild them in, somewhat in place. So that is the application that is pending. I have provided here larger copies of certain plans that have all been provided to the board and reviewed. This is a aerial rendering of the end product. This one plan here, the blue outline, shows the proposed footprint of the new building. The dashed red outline is the existing footprint. As you can see, the majority of the expansion is to the rear of the building, which is the service court out of the view of the public. There is smaller cutouts, carve-outs, within the pedestrian promenade of where the new footprint will be. These will not impact emergency services pathways that have been established for Woodbury. There are several other renderings, elevations provided. I also have plans specific for grading and utility servicing, should the board or consultants have, or public have any questions or concerns related. As this is an ARB hearing, as well, we have provided materials board here that shows the proposed materials that are all consistent with what is currently in use throughout the Woodbury Common, but more specifically, matching the other tenant buildings within the Hudson Valley District. Just running through, this is, by all intentions, this will be a premier building within our site. Michael Kors, their architects, as well as our in-house architects, have worked diligently on this material selection and the design of the buildings. This will be the flagship store for Michael Kors and outlet shopping. It will be something spectacular. What we have here is a standing seam metal roof, which is gray in color and steel. This would be located on the gables, on the dormers, the mullions. We have black, which will provide treatment on the gable entries. There will be two large gable entries into the new store. We have horizontal and vertical siding, both pearl gray, hardy plank, which will be located on all facades around the building. We have casing and cladding for the gables, the dormers and the eaves. The gray roof, which is throughout the Hudson, or the gray shingle roof, I should say, which is throughout the Hudson Valley District. We have a black awning fabric over the storefront windows. We have black slate, which will be used as accent material on columns and wall bases. Insulated clear glass for the storefront windows and also the gable entries. And frosted glass, which will be illuminated for all the dormers. So any other questions, concerns, I'm happy to take them now. Thank you.
You have a question? Yeah, only, I wasn't here at the, or I wasn't at the last meeting. I just had a question about, I guess, what page is it? Page six on what you gave us. So Michael Kors, the name Michael Kors is going to be on every glass panel? Or is that just?
That's just more an artistic view. I think it's pretty safe to say that, as there are throughout the center, these storefront windows will have displays that will, will show the merchandise, most likely, some type of logo, some type of name. There is a lot of signage, but this did come up two weeks ago, and consistent with all other interior signage that's not within view of the traveling public. It will not be approved for building permit or installation unless we sign off. So we really don't comment much on the storefront windows, but the signs, the backlit, individual illuminated signs above the storefront entries, those will be a little smaller than as shown, but those are pretty consistent in size.
There's two of those?
Yes, there'll be two above the, within the gable entries, yes.
Okay, so I am just a little confused on what you're saying. So this, these, on the glass panels, they may be there or they may not be there?
They're, it's really subject to the tenant and their, and it's constantly changing and evolving.
Is that subject to our signage?
Woodbury Common, Dennis, correct me if I'm wrong, they have a signage?
There's a signage plan that was reviewed by the Planning Board. There's a signage plan that was reviewed by the Planning Board in detail. It goes through the number of signs, the location. It was done in conjunction with the Common, because the Common wanted to, they didn't want to frankly have their tenants run amok too. The tenants do have particular needs and that sort of thing, but it has to fit within the framework of what that approval was. And that's what we've been following along, Gary reviews everyone that comes in. And frankly, I'm surprised at all the ones in the glass, and I don't know if that would be complying. So that may just be something that they showed on here. But there are things that they're allowed to do and things they're not allowed to do. How they come off the building, you know, the size, the overall size. So there is a booklet, actually, I have it back in the office, that is the requirement, that are the agreed requirements between Woodbury Common, the tenants and the Woodbury Building Department.
Okay, so ultimately Gary would review that?
Yeah, they're gonna have to sign off that it is compliant.
And usually, some of the stores may not have it on the window itself, but it'd be on the inside of the building. It might be a stand-up sign that has the name, I'll use Nike, or Burt's Babies, Burt's Bees Baby, where they have all these extra signs. They're not on the glass, but they're right inside the window.
No, I just was concerned, because like every piece of glass has Michael Kors on.
I mean, if that is permitted under the prior template, as Dennis was saying, then they'd be able to do that. So one of your conditions here, number one, is that all the applicable conditions that have attached to prior approvals, which include this, apply here. So Gary would be the one that enforced this to make sure that in fact it wasn't compliance.
And to be clear, you're not approving anything right now that's inconsistent with that plan, simply because it might be shown on here in that glass. So that's inconsistent, they're not gonna be allowed to proceed with it.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Chris, anything, or should I go to the public? Rich? John, we're just gonna, should we take a step back or sit down for a moment? Anyone in the second row that would like to speak on this application? Anyone in the third row that would like to speak on this application? Anyone in the fourth row that would like to speak on this application? Anyone else in the room that would like to speak on this application, please step forward? With no one coming forward at this time, John, you can step back to the podium? We can close the hearing. Motion to close the public hearing? Is that Rich?
Yes. I'll second.
Second? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Close to close, oh my, okay. Rick?
Yes.
We reaffirm Seeker on March 20th. So we're good there? We can't, no reports back from either department in the Orange County level. So we can't, we could read the resolution, but I guess we can just wait, because we're gonna have to change some language then, of when we received items on page four, right?
Yeah, there is, the one thing we could do is you have the resolution of approval. And typically it wouldn't say, let's read it through prior to when you're going to approve it. But there were two changes that were requested by the applicant that I'd like to ask you to consider. I think both of those are appropriate. But if so, then for the next meeting, we would go ahead and incorporate those in a new resolution that we would send to you.
Okay.
The first is the change of the name. So rather than CPG Partners LP, it should be Premium Outlet Partners LP.
That's on the first page and all throughout, right?
I think it's just on the first page.
Just on the cover, okay.
And then there was a specific condition, number six, that was modified, and I think it's an appropriate modification, consistent with all of the discussions we had. It starts to read, "Suite 324 shall," and then inserted, following that word, "be vacated prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the proposed building, and shall," and then it continues, "remain vacant until additional GLA available." So it would read, "Suite 324 shall be vacated prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the proposed building, comma, and shall remain vacant until additional GLA is available." And I think that's consistent with all of your discussions.
And then, I'm just gonna, on page six, specific condition number one, we're okay with it saying, "Premium Outlet Partners LP slash Chelsea's GCA Realty"?
That's what it was when it was approved previously.
Okay, second stack. All right. Board members, do you have any problem with those two changes? So Rick, you'll give us a revised?
Yes.
For the next meeting?
Yes.
And then we'll have everything all cleared up. John, you have anything else for us?
Can I just ask a question about number six? So basically, you're just saying that 324, Suite 324 will continue to operate through renovations, through everything, until you get the CO for this new building?
No.
Essentially, yes.
Yes?
Yes.
They can do that, yeah. It has to be vacated prior to the issuance of a CO. Because it's proposed building.
And that's supposed to remain vacant?
Yeah.
Until the GL?
Until GLA is available.
Yeah, but what Sandy was asking, well, since it has to be vacated prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, until that is done?
Right.
You can occupy the building and utilize it.
Okay.
That's correct.
You have anything for us?
I do not.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
No worries. Thank you.
Have a good one.
You too.
Did we have to do anything else? That was it, right?
No, that's it. Would have done the resolution, but we knew that last time. We had discussed last time that it was being referred on the 5th of March. And depends upon the meeting schedule, but it fell just one day shy of 30 days. We were hopeful that the county report would come in, but it didn't.
Okay. Next item, Bakersfield Estates, review revised subdivision plans submitted for proposed three-lot subdivision of property. Said property is located at 299 Bakersfield Road in Highland Mills and is known on the Village of Woodbury tax maps as section 213 Block 1 Lot 48. Another John? How are you? Stormwater pollution prevention plan from August 2017. We're still keeping that? Doesn't need to be revised or anything? Okay, I just want to make sure, because I can't... Okay, give us an overview of what we're looking at tonight?
Sure. Good evening, everyone, John Queenen.
Time out, time out, I'm sorry. I did have two notes here. Langton, we received a restrictive covenant, was removed and filed. There was a letter from your office, well, from you, John, from March 20th. But Rick, I have a question for you. On the second page, we only have a copy of the receipt. We don't have a full copy of the cover sheet that is normally filed with the county clerk's office that shows, I'll show you that in a second. Usually the Orange County Clerk's Office recording page has all the information. She shows the receipt in the bottom. All we have is just the receipt, so I don't know if that's the same, that was the one that was done years ago. We don't have the full sheet.
That's one of the copies, I think we had.
Okay. You know, I'm sorry, usually...
Yeah, I know it's true. I'll get it from the applicant.
Okay. Thank you. You would miss it in the entire Orange County recording page. And then we received memo from H2M on March 29th, and we have a revised application from 2017. Go for it.
All right. John Queenen from Langton Tully, engineer for the applicant. This is before you, yeah, back in 2017.
This is before you, yeah, back in 2017. It is a proposed three-lot subdivision at the corner of Seven Springs Road and Baker Town Road. It's an existing 8.8 acre parcel of land, and we are proposing to subdivide into three single-family residential lots. Lot one is westernmost over here, which would be two acres in size. Lot number two would be two acres in size. And lot number three would be the balance, would be the four acres in size. We're proposing driveway access for each lot off of Baker Town Road, and both, all lots will be serviced by well and septic. We were last before you, there was a restrictive covenant that was placed on this property with the property owner in the Village of Charis Choal regarding water. And the property owner and the applicant have worked diligently to come to a resolution on terminating that restrictive covenant. So, that was the documents that we submitted, and we'll get you the fill-in from the Orange County sheet. But that covenant has been terminated. So, therefore, we're back with our revised plan. We really didn't revise too much. We had gone pretty far with the Board back in 2017. The only other major outstanding item, which we did recently complete based upon the termination of the covenant, was the location of the trees on the property greater than eight inches in diameter within the disturbance area. So, we'll be providing that to you with our next submission because we just finished that up several days ago. So, basically, I just wanted to confirm tonight that the Board and the Board's counsel was okay with the termination language and agreement, that that issue was solved. And if the Board had any further comments, most of the comments, if I remember, were based on trees and tree locations and if we could, you know, shift the houses around to avoid further disturbance of the trees. I went through Dennis's memo. I don't have any objection to any of the comments that he's provided. It's pretty straightforward and standard. That's where we're at at this time.
Thank you.
Oh, and also, we'll be submitting generic elevations and application for ARB.
Okay. Just as a... I can't find in my file where it asked that you, the location of the property on the application before the Planning Board. It said Monroe. I'm not sure if you submitted a new...
If we did, I'll get you one.
Just review it and just put that on there for me.
Sure.
Thank you. So, it's properly filed in the Building Department. Dennis, usual and customary, I'll defer to you.
Well, John already agreed to everything I have there, so I really don't have too much. But I'll say that there is the right-of-way, and I think Rick will have to weigh in on that. And I did notice that it said right-of-way, and it was a little unusual. I don't know why they noted that. So, maybe they only have some... So many classifications and it falls on that. That's my guess. I wasn't involved with it, but that's my guess. And I figured it was something like that. But in any event, that's that. There are separation distances, and there's that one lot that's located, looks like it may be downstream from a septic slightly, and it may be less than 200 feet. So, in that one, we may need a professional judgment by you in terms of... Yeah, because that's not cast in stone, as you know, with the Health Department. So, we might need a professional judgment on that. Take a look at the soils and whatever's there, and especially the depth of rock and that sort of thing. We still... They have not drilled the wells yet. It's not unusual. I think they want to get some indication on a preliminary that this is gonna be approved before they invest in the wells. But you cannot approve a lot that doesn't have demonstrated water supply. So, it will need to be done. They have done their own preliminary septic tests, and they're positive in terms of their ability to treat wastewater based on those tests, and they provided designs in accordance with their testing. However, prior to final, they will need to have those tests witnessed. This is the standard practice of the Building Department. It would either be witnessed by Gary or by me, but they'll have to do those tests and they know that. Other than that, they've provided... I provided you with a six-page memo that has various technical comments, which the applicant is going to comply with in the next submission. And so, my next memo will be paragraph, saying everything is good. Unless you have any questions, that's all I have.
I'll go to Rick.
All right. The... With respect to the restrictive covenant and the rescission of that, we did review the language, and the language is fine. Seeker, the Board had previously declared its intent to type the action in March of 2017, but has not yet assumed lead agency. I think it would be appropriate tonight for you to assume lead agency and ask us to prepare an EAF Part Two.
That's it?
That's all I have.
All right. Before I forget, I'll offer a motion that we declare ourselves lead agency. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, I should've... I'll also offer a motion that we request that the Attorney's Office prepare the EAF Part Two.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Rich, any thoughts, concerns, questions at that end?
No, good.
Chris?
Probably.
Sandy?
Just a couple of things. John, when I looked at the first map you gave us in 17, and this map, everything seems the same, even the area, except for lot number three got bigger. How did that get bigger? It was 3.877 acres, and now it's 4.076 acres.
He's gonna review it for us, right?
Yeah.
I mean, it looks identical.
Unless we hadn't finished the survey when we first... When we first preliminary submitted to you. I'm not sure. We had an initial consideration.
Concern regarding the areas and the lots. But we think that is through the right-of-way. It was about known that has anything to do with it.
It could. We might've... Yeah, I'll find out what's happening.
Okay. Just curious how it got bigger. And then, who is the owner?
The owner is Seven Springs Core.
Okay. Because on both maps, it still says Baker Valley Associates of Middletown. So, I think it... Maybe it just...
On sheet one?
Yeah.
Oh, Baker, yeah. Yeah, it has to be updated. Yeah, it's Seven Springs Core. It used to was Baker Valley, and then they transferred over.
Okay.
And it'll be 299 Big... Seven Springs COR?
Yes.
LLC? And the owner is in Brooklyn?
Correct.
Okay. And then, oh, the one thing I'm gonna ask you is the signature square in the bottom corner?
Mm-hmm.
Every page? When it comes down a little, you know? Thank you.
No problem.
You can make it a little smaller, so I don't have to...
Okay.
Anything else, Sandy?
Nope, that's it.
All right. With all that being said, I guess, John, you have some work to do, and you're gonna get back to us?
Yes.
Any other questions for us?
No. We'll be back to you with the elevations and the ARB and the trees.
All right. And ARB, elevations, okay. And are you... You're not gonna build the homes right now? You're just subdividing?
Just subdividing.
Okay. And then, Rick, I guess you'll put a note in the... When we get further down, they have to come back for... They'll have to come back for each house or not?
I'm confused if you're coming in with elevations, but you're not asking for...
Well, at the time, the Board had requested some generic elevations of the house types.
Oh, for Ridge Preservation?
Ridge Preservation.
Okay.
Oh, Ridge Preservation, we want...
Got it. Understood. So, it's not an ARB, it's just Ridge Preservation?
Correct.
Okay.
We have to make a decision now? We need to make a decision now for ARB about photos and instead of... Or balloon testing? Or should we wait?
I don't think... I don't know if balloon testing is required, but a superimposed photo...
What you usually do.
For Ridge Preservation is required.
All right, so...
Your typical practice unless...
Yeah, so what we have prepared are basic cross-section elevations, and then we've drawn in a house. It's not an actual photo, it's...
I think it requires a photo simulation.
You need a phone? Yeah, requires it. There are... They have waived when there are just trees in front, and there's no possible visible...[1754.11]